Please, as we scroll through the names, just make sure that your name comes up with a P next to it so that we know that your clicker is working. Tonight, we will begin where we left off on Monday at Article 21, Page 29 in your Town of Winchester Articles, Motions and Backgrounds book with the green cover. On behalf of the petitioner, the Select Board, its Vice Chair, Anthea Brady. Just while we're reading on that, I just want to remind everybody on this one, there's going to be a majority vote. It is moved and seconded that the town vote to amend the water and sewer rates currently in effect in accordance with Chapter 7, Section 3 of the Town of Winchester Code of Bylaws. All bills for consumption on or after March 1st, 2025 shall be in conformance with the rates printed on Pages 23 and, I'm sorry, 29 and 30 of your warrant book.
All right. Thank you again, Mr. Moderator and Town Meeting Members. Let's dive in. So whenever this comes before the Select Board, we get into extended discussion of the rates and how they're determined and what we can do, and I have 10 minutes. So, what's our Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund? It keeps our revenues and expenditures around water and sewers separate from the rest of the budget, and it retains any surplus to that as retained earnings. And that pays for our water, our sewer, our stormwater, our drainage costs, and a couple other things. So, we have our water and sewer expenditures, so what we're actually spending this on. MWRA assessments, so it's based on our water usage and as that compares to other customers, our sewer usage for the last three years. And we've had some increased assessments due to sort of different and newer meters reading our water and sewer usage. This also includes our operating expenses, so paying for our personnel, the DPW and expenses, as well as some indirect cost to DPW, our EPA MS4 permit compliance, and debt service. In terms of, thank you. In terms of our revenue, so much of that comes from residential and commercial users. So, 50% of that is the user fees, what you're paying per unit of water. A small percent is service charges, and then the Chapter 110 tax levy, which is shifting debt service from our enterprise fund over to the town's tax levy. In FY 2025, for FY 2025, the Select Board decided to use $316,000 of ARPA funds to supplement what we have in our water and sewer revenue and into the water and sewer retained earnings. So, for those of you who are new to Town Meeting, I cannot predict the weather, spoiler alert. For those of you who have been here before, you know that we tend to go up and down, and we don't know going into the year what the summertime will look like, which is really when we either get a whole lot of water usage, like in 2020 when we had a very dry year, or very little water usage, like in 2021, which was the third wettest summer on record. And then we flip-flapped back and forth, so we had an extreme drought in 2022. 2023 was the second wettest July on record. In 2024, it started out pretty wet and rainy, but by the fall, we were in a drought. So, all signs point December 2025 being completely unpredictable. And just to give you an idea of 2024, if you remember, this is Western Mass, was in a very mild drought in sort of June, July. As time went on, though, now Eastern Mass is in a mild drought, and then the whole state, really except for Cape and the Islands by the fall, and much more severe as we're heading into the winter. And at this point, we're still coming out and recovering from the drought that the state felt last year. So, really hard to know even as we went through a very wet April, a weekend-wet April, what's going to happen. What I can tell you is then how you think of the water and sewer rates compared to what you're paying and what they go to. This is a lovely picture of my water meter also, just to give you an idea. This actually is counting off the units of water used in my house. This is a winter bill, and it was before what we call the Great Preschool Mud Incident of 2025, which is when the water got turned on and four-year-olds are coming home with multiple changes of clothes every day because they were playing in the sand and the mud. So, on my water bill, which is very low this year, $35 in user fees, 15 units at the 15-unit cost, which is slightly different between water and sewer, and one unit at the 16 to 29 unit cost. So where does that bill go? Just to go back to this, a little over half of it is going to the MWRA assessments, $31.31 to operating expenses, $13.70 to debt services and to indirects, and $1.05 to MS4 permit compliance. So, in terms of how we fund that, over the years, we've done increases coming from the Select Board, and we tend to have a planned idea of what that's going to look like over time. So, sometimes we're fairly close to what's predicted, and sometimes we have a very wet summertime, and we're not so close to that. What we're proposing for this year is an 8% increase for water and sewer rates for FY '26, so starting July 1st, which is kind of estimated 7.5% to 8.5% in the out-years, but when we sort of went through this exercise to vote on water rates, we elected a rate between the proposed three options of 6.75%, 9% and 12.5%. So, could have some fluctuations over the next few years. So that proposed change, the 8% increase, there's no change to the service charge. It would remain at $35 a quarter. So, the current bill is estimated to go up for 15 units, go up about $4.80 for an average residential at 29 units, to go up $17.26. For average commercial, $53.65. And average irrigation, $72.10. So what would that look like, the preschool mud incident of 2025? Likely, my water bill is going up this quarter, but if we were to look at last quarter's bill with the increase in cost, it'd go to $111.09. And then that bumps up to $58.88 for MWRA assessments, all the way down $33.33 operating. So just to give you a taste of what that looks like. And then here, just an idea, again, year-to-year, kind of what our revenues and expenditures look like. The orange line is expenditures, so what we're spending, and the blue stacked is what our revenues are looking like. So, again, just coming back to asking for your support in voting yes to increase our water and sewer rates by 8% for the upcoming year. Thanks.
Thank you.
Yes, and may go without saying, but the Select Board votes favorable action on this.
Thank you, and I believe FinCon took no vote on this?
The Finance Committee did not take a position on this. We just want to note that another cost that is somewhat not controllable, so adding to the taxpayer burden of the town, but no position.
Thank you. Any Town Meeting members would like to be heard on this topic? Okay, I think Town Meeting is ready for the question. I'll read the motion again and then proceed to the vote. It is moved and seconded that the town vote to amend the water and sewer rates currently in effect in accordance with Chapter 7, Section 3 of the Town of Winchester Code of Bylaws. All bills for consumption on or after March 1st, 2025 shall be in conformance with the rates printed on Pages 29 and 30 of your warrant book. All those in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries. Having completed Article 21, I just want to take a step back and give members a picture of where we are. We started with 56 articles. 12 were completed as part of the consent agenda. This is for the visual learners in the back especially. So that was the consent agenda. With the articles that we completed on Monday and Article 21 this evening, we found ourselves at about our own 43-yard line. We can't continue to take them in order because the Code of Bylaws states that no article that contains an appropriation of funds applicable to the annual operating budget for the ensuing fiscal year shall be considered by this town meeting prior to the first Monday of May. Article 22 begins a series of articles that relate to FY '26 budget, so we have to go out of order now. We're going to go all the way to Article 37 with one exception. In order to utilize tonight's time at its fullest, we'd like to proceed with a series of bylaw articles offered by the Committee on Government Regulations acting as the Decennial Review Committee. I ask unanimously to consent to proceed to those articles out of order. All of those in favor? Any opposed? Passes unanimously. For those who have been following the public hearings on the reports and discussions, there are a number of bylaw articles that contain proposed amendments that have been viewed as relatively uncontroversial. Rather than hear all those articles individually and allowing 10 minutes for each of them for the presentation, I've decided to group them all together, and Cogger will use 10 minutes to address all of them. And then we'll hear from boards and committees. So, using that parliamentary thing, we can skip, go ahead, to about our 33-yard line. And hopefully, that allows us to go fast through those articles, which then will allow us to attack the more controversial articles. And by the end of the meeting tonight, I'm hopeful that we'll get to the red zone and put us in position to be able to complete this town meeting in three nights. I don't want to be held. This isn't wood. I think this is wood. Okay. So back to the exception I was talking about, we are able to hear Article 31 tonight. It's not FY '26 operating budget. However, it's not ready for us, so the Chair would like to welcome a motion to postpone Article 31 to a time certain. That time certain being the second-to-last order of business of this town meeting. Can I get a motion? A second? All those in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay. So now, we will proceed to Article 40. On behalf of the petitioner, the Committee on Government Regulations acting as the Decennial Review Committee, its Co-Chair, Megan Blackwell. And the list of the articles that she's going to address right now is at the top of the page. There are 40, 41, 42, 44, 46, 47, 48, 50, 51, 52, 53, 54, and 55. Are there any questions? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, Select Board, Finance Committee, Town Meeting Members. Now, remember, I'm going to talk about 14 articles. It could have been 140 minutes, but I'm going to do it in 10 minutes. So, just, yeah, keep that in mind, keep that in mind. So this is a cheat sheet, so I'm going to talk about the ones in green, and then other members of our committee will come up and talk about Article 37 for Chapter 1. I'll come back again in place for Ed Leveque to talk about Article 38, Chapter 2, then Joan Miller, Article 43, Chapter 6, and Colin Simpson, the other co-chair, Article 49, Chapter 13. So what I'm going to try to do for all of these articles is summarize at a high level what the changes are. And I'll scroll through quickly of the specific changes that were presented in our hearing and are in your motion book. And then I will summarize the effect, the impact, of each article, if it were to pass or if it didn't pass. So we'll start with Article 40, which is Chapter 3, Elected Officials. So, the changes updated the election dates to reflect the current practice of holding elections on Saturdays instead of Tuesdays, and this is the rationale for it. Also, we updated selectmen to select board. We removed Chief of Police as the collector of towing fees, as that's handled directly by the towing company. And, let's see, that was it. So if Article 40 passes, Chapter 3 will accurately reflect current practices. If it doesn't pass, then Chapter 3 will not accurately reflect current practices. Here are the exact changes, which I know the text is small, but I feel like I have to scroll through it. Okay, on to 41. So, Chapter 4, Town Manager. There was one change. We added language to clarify that the town manager designates the Department of Public Works to issue or revoke permits for breaking, digging the street, and removing dirt therfrom. Always wanted to say that word in a public context, therfrom. So if it passes, Chapter 4 will reflect current practices. If it doesn't pass, it won't. There's the exact change. Chapter 42, I'm sorry, Article 42, Chapter 5, Administrative Organization. So the amendments allow the town manager to appoint the town clerk, the town treasurer-collector, and the town engineer for more than one year at a time. It also allows the town clerk and constables to live outside of Winchester. And it also allows free distribution of electronic copies of the bylaws and charter. It officially, the amendments officially revises the title of the town treasurer to town treasurer-collector, and it revises the awkward and confusing passive language with more understandable present tense language. If Article 42 passes, the town manager may make extended appointments, and Chapter 5 will accurately reflect current practices. If it doesn't pass, the town manager must continue to reappoint positions annually, and Chapter 5 will not accurately reflect current practices. There's the exact language. Again, again, and again, and again. Article 44, Chapter 7, Water Works and Sewerage System. So we replaced a gendered pronoun without altering the meaning of the section. We missed it in the fall. We added private ways for completion to, it's a different word. It's not undeveloped. We'll see. I'll show it. I'll call it out. And then we amended the language to reflect an uncertainty in tax estimation. And now you'll see this for a few articles. Whether or not it passes or fails, there'll be no changes to how things are done. You know, we're just cleaning up the language. There's the language. Okay, it was an unaccepted or private way. On to Article 45, Chapter 8, Public Order. There are a lot of small changes here. So I don't think I'm going to scroll through it all. I'll just summarize it here. You can follow along in your motion book. So, this updates the procedures and the laws currently in place. It allows the Select Board to designate others to issue licenses for yard sales. It cites Mass General Law 101 for vendor registration. It requires use of fireworks within the town to have, people who use fireworks, to hold a state license. It adds tree limbs as an obstruction that should be cleared. And it also adds ADA accessible spaces for parking consideration. And it cites Mass General Law 40, Section 21, for fines. And it also, the updates modernize the intent of several sections. So for one section, it removes the prohibitions against tying animals to trees and throwing snowballs. It updates window peeping to cover privacy in general, and it updates disorderly behavior to focus on safety. More changes. So, I try to show what archaic language is replaced throughout the chapter. So instead of hand carriages, it refers to wheelchairs or strollers. Disabled veterans or handicapped people are now referred to as persons with disabilities. More gendered pronouns are removed that we missed in the fall. And I want to call to your attention that we list wears twice. This was inadvertent. We will have a friendly motion to strike that. And again, whether or not this article passes, it's not going to change how things are done in town. It's just cleaning up the language. Article 46, Chapter 9, Signs. So, we corrected spelling and grammar, and we voted to remove language "shall be" in Section 2.6D, that's printed in your warrant, but it wasn't deleted in time. So, that should be stricken. That will be a friendly amendment made on the floor. And again, whether or not it passes or not, nothing's going to change how things are done in town. So here's the "shall be" that we voted to be stricken. And there's a spelling correction. On to Article 47, Chapter 10, Dog Leash Law. The amendment recognizes that the ADA requires service dogs to be leashed unless such restraint would impede the work of the service dog. Whether or not it passes, no changes will be made to how things are done in town. There's the exact language. Article 48, Chapter 11, Anti-Letter. So multiple edits were made here to simplify the language and clarify the procedure. Confusing language is rewritten, definitions are updated, redundant language is removed, compliance authority is clarified, and again, whether or not it passes or fails, no change to how things are done. Article 50, Chapter 14, Preservation of Historically Significant Buildings. There was a clarification added of the criteria language to reflect that more than one could apply in determinations, and I'll show that to you. And there was a requirement added for demolition delay hearings. When those are held, after a determination is made, a requirement has been added to send in writing details that include the rationale of the decision. And it could be as simple as saying, "Criteria C, per this section of the bylaw applies." So if Article 50 passes, the language is clarified, additional transparency is given concerning the demolition delay hearings, and some additional work will be required by the Historical Commission. If it doesn't pass, the language will not be clarified, and additional transparency will not be given concerning demo-delay hearings. Here's the exact language. So, this is Section 3, Subsection 5, the criteria for determination of an eligible building being a historically significant building. You'll see A through D listed, and/or was added, just to specify one or more could be used. And the other suggestion that I mentioned, we're in the home stretch. Article 51 covers Chapter 15, Smoking. So it is recommended to delete this chapter in its entirety. May I have an additional three minutes?
Granted.
Thank you. Board of Health and the Director of the Health Department agree that there are more stringent state laws that cover smoking in public places. The state laws also cover nicotine products, cigarettes, and vaping, while Chapter 15 in its current state does not. And I have this up here because there was a question on whether or not bylaw reviews have suggested the deletion of an entire chapter. And to answer that question, yes, they have. Here's the citation. Wakefield deemed four chapters unnecessary and deleted them. So if Article 51 passes, Chapter 15 will mark as deleted. If it fails, Chapter 15 will remain a bylaw. Either way, no change to how things are done in town. Okay. Article 52, Chapter 17, Regulation of News Racks. So the suggested edits alphabetize definitions, update contact information, method of correspondence, and delete text that is no longer applicable. If this passes, email, US mail, and telephone will all be methods used for contact. If it doesn't pass, only written or telephonic notification will be used if anyone ever applies for a news rack permit or is in violation of this bylaw. And so it was pointed out that while news racks are not widely in use today, the bylaw does provide oversight of printed materials when they're distributed on town property. And so that's why it just wasn't stricken entirely. Here's the definitions, the exact changes. Okay, Article 53, Chapter 18, Public Shade Trees. The amendments clarify the authority of the Conservation Commission with regard to public shade trees, which are Mass General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8C, and bylaw, Chapter 13. The amendments revise the membership of the Permanent Street Tree Committee by expanding it from five to seven members, and the Design Review Committee requested to be dismissed from serving on this committee. And to replace them for at-large members were added. If Article 53 passes, the authority for the Conservation Committee will be more clearly defined. The membership will be expanded to seven members and will not include the Design Review Committee. If Article 53 does not pass, the authority for the Conservation Committee to regulate activities will not change, and the membership of the committee will remain unchanged, although some members might just skip meetings. Okay, there are the exact changes. Home stretch, two more left. Article 54, Renumbering of Bylaw Sections. So these edits would facilitate the electronic indexing of bylaw sections and subsections as shown here. If it passes, it'll be easier to index the bylaw sections online. If it fails, they'll still be indexed online. The vendor might charge us more because it's a little harder. Okay, last article. Article 55, Footnotes. So the suggested edits would standardize the references to state and federal laws as well as to dates of specific town meetings that bylaws were enacted. So here's one example where brackets had been used, but that would be replaced by a footnote, and so forth. If it passes, the footnotes will be standardized. If it fails, a hodgepodge of references will remain in the bylaws. But if it passes or fails, there'll no real change to how things are done. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Now, we're going to hear from the Select Board.
There's a lot there. So, Select Board will give recommendations on all of them. Mr. Moderator, do you want us to go 40, 41?
No, no, just give like a little bit of an overview.
We'll do.
Individual votes.
Come back up. Okay, so Select Board reviewed all of these in multiple meetings, and the moderator, to his credit, has been very patient with us as we work through it. I think you're going to find from Select Board, there's a mixed bag of favorable and unfavorable. And some of the unfavorable are related to some potentially conflicts within chapter within chapters. So an update in this chapter didn't make it into a later chapter. Sort of some meta-references referring to a different chapter of the bylaws. Some things that we think the clarification that was added, in fact, muddies the waters. And definitions, when we get to Chapter 1, some are already defined in the Charter, so maybe don't need to be in the bylaw. So you're going to hear a little bit of everything from the Select Board, but... So you're going to hear a little bit of everything from the Select Board, but they're certainly more favorable than not for government regulations. And we have marked up a motion book, thanks to Bill, and gave it to the moderator. So to the extent that we have specific language that we think we should strike that change in one dot something, the moderator has that language, so we'll take those up as they come. But thank you, Gov. Regs, all eight of you, for the work that you did. It's been a ton and a lot of useful cleanup and making things modern, so appreciate that. Thanks.
Thank you. And I just want to make a note, due to the youth and inexperience of our acting town clerk. If you could put your, if you could put your, I was really talking about myself. If you could put your amendments, if you have any amendments that you'd like to post, to offer, please put them in writing so that we can read them and get the wording correct. Thank you. Okay, so now we will proceed to Article forty. And we're going to have all the slides up on the projector, which is now working. Thank you very much to the team that got that working. For these early ones, not all, for the longer articles, not all of the verbiage can fit on the screen, but we're doing the best. And I think mostly it will be helpful more times than not. Okay. Article forty is moved and seconded that the town vote to amend certain subsections of Chapter three of the town's general bylaws as set forth in the war. We'll now hear the recommendation of the Select Board. Mrs. Pryor?
Select Board recommended favorable action unanimously on the edits to Chapter three. Article forty.
Are there any other boards or committees that want to be heard on this? And now I'll ask any town meeting members who want to be heard to make their way. Please state your name and precinct.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mark Fevelwoods, Precinct one. I have only a small question and possible suggestion. For three point nine, Item D, that's the one thing that doesn't look like any of the others. Each one of them suggests a by some person or agency or group. And this one, the by the Chief of Police, has been stricken, but there's, it's not clear if it's the towing and storage company that gets that privilege to set the rates. So I think what I'm suggesting here is that we somehow reword that first part that says by the towing company or whoever has that power, and this is the same as the others.
Thank you. To the Town Council, do you think, do you want to talk to that?
Jay Tallerman, Town Council. I think the intention of the deletion there is that it would revert to the default in the preamble to three nine, which would be the Select Board doing that. Certainly, you could, three seven, well, it says three nine, the Select Board unless otherwise provided by law. Okay, so three.
Three nine.
Right. So the default is the Select Board. It certainly could be added in Select Board to have that redundancy, such as in Section A, it has that redundancy, but it's not necessary because the default would be the Select Board unless otherwise noted.
Does that answer your question?
Oh, just, Colin, do you?
Sure.
There are no fines for parking in the wrong place. Basically, the towing company charges a fee for picking up the car, and it charges a fee for storing the car. And so therefore, the town really isn't involved in the parking violations at that point.
Yeah, I heard that in a prior presentation on Monday. And I still come back to the fact that we're talking about establishing and promulgating fees, and then we're talking about the towing. And the intent that I'm hearing here is that the towing company establishes the fees. And this is, this line seems to be saying that the Select Board does that, but what I'm hearing is that it's the towing company that does it. So there's unclarity about that.
Okay. Ms. Sarah?
Anne Sarah, Precinct one. I'm really uncomfortable with the process here because I feel like, I mean, during the presentation, which was very, very organized, I still was racing to try to follow it. And I have many, 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 many edits. Edits that I was never able to provide because there was no public comment period. When regulations are changed, it is typical and ordinary for there to be a public comment period on those regulations. There hasn't been here. And consequently, we're going to be trying to write things on the floor. We just heard that one Select Board member has given some edits. How are we going to see those? I even have small, small to large edits. Some edits which are seemingly small, but kind of when you think about it, might be large. And this one is a good example, the one that we just talked about. Because if you have a towing and storage company that is a preferred vendor, and they're able to set whatever fees they want, that's a license for corruption. So typically what happens is that there is a fee set by the, even if it's for storage and not an additional fee, there is something set by the town. This sort of where it seems like it's a small change, but maybe it isn't, is what you would get if we had a series of public input hearings. The COGR was very rushed. They did not have the amount of time that every other COGR had. They came up with a body of work that's very impressive. But they did not have the time, only one public hearing, which was an information push. It was not a feedback mission, and we need the time for that. I have not had time to read the temperature of the room or to hear other feedback about this. Only people in my direct circle feel the same way that I do. We're very, very uncomfortable with many of these changes. There's a lot of other little changes we could get by with. For example, the word Select Board or town should always be capitalized. That's a change that would come on every single page if you accepted it, and I think you should. But it's every single page. There were little changes, things that I found. For example, and one of the things we're voting on here, they put in the words and/or, and/or. That's grammatically incorrect for what you want to achieve. Instead, it should be one or more of the following, and then list it with a comment as it was before.
Okay, reach the end of your time. To the Committee on Government Relations, Regulations, would you like to speak to the public process?
Sure. We did have twenty-two open meetings where we welcomed anyone from the public or the boards to attend. And we did have a pre-hearing. It was a Zoom meeting, unfortunately. I say unfortunately because it was bombed. But now we had the hearing at Wincam, and we did receive some feedback that we acted upon. And more feedback is always better. But we did have open meetings. And furthermore, we used the Town Meeting Member Association website, the forum. And whenever we voted changes, we posted them there. So these changes have been there quite a long time. And Mr. Moderator, may I make a comment on the language of Section D?
Yes, sure.
So one thing I want to highlight here is how it, the preamble, I mean, just as Jay said, the Select Board, unless otherwise provided by law, shall at least annually establish and promulgate fees to be charged. Thank you. And for Section D, it's for the towing. And it's not by the towing. Nowhere in it does it say by. It says for the towing. So at least to my reading, it doesn't make sense how that could be interpreted, that the towing company would set fees.
Thank you. Further on the question, Mr. Deering from Precinct one.
Mr. Moderator, given the complexity of all these articles, and I don't think there's probably ten people here that could probably explain two of them to us. I move indefinitely postpone all these articles.
So we'd only do one of the, you're making more, this, this one? Yeah, we're going to go one by one. Do we have a second? All right, let's take out your clickers. Oh, I'm sorry, this is a motion that can be debated. If anybody wants to be heard on this? Just state your name.
Bill Swanton, Precinct five. I'd like to really, as opposed to indefinitely postponing this, hear specific motions for amending the articles as opposed to just sweeping them under the rug. Thank you.
Mr. Miller?
John Miller from Precinct six. I'm against indefinite postponement. They've put a lot of work into this. Article forty is a pretty good example of why we should go forward. There is literally, there's very little change in here. It's been explained why the by the Chief of Police has been deleted. This is a pretty good example of something that we could face right now, that one hundred and ninety-two people who have a lot of value to their time are ready to vote on. If we postpone this, we're just going to have to do it again. So I mean, this is an example of something that's pretty easy to me. I don't think this is a big change, and I think the changes I've seen in the other articles presented, this doesn't amount to much more than some clerical updating and a few procedural changes. I think we should proceed. And if we delay, we're going to, we're going to have to do it in the fall.
Thank you. Anyone else? So we're going to vote right now on the motion to indefinitely postpone. Please take out your clickers. A yes vote is to indefinitely postpone Article forty, and a no would be, we continue debate. Voting will be open for thirty seconds. Okay, one hundred and twenty-six voting in the negative, the motion fails. So is another town meeting member want to speak? Okay. All right. Mr. Marm? What? Yes, on the original motion.
Mr. Moderator, I'm Doug Marm in Precinct one. And can we get the motion returned?
Sure.
The argument is that we're striking by the Chief of Police because he doesn't do the towing. Right below, we have the Fire Chief. Does he do the towing? Why aren't we striking by the Fire Chief? And for that matter, by the Director of Public Works. It seems to me that all we're saying is the Select Board establishes the fees, and it lists the fees. So all those words in front of that seem superfluous. Thank you.
To the proponents, do you want to speak to them?
All I can say is to repeat that there are no fees involved in Section D. They are charges, standard charges by the selected towing company that the Select Board vets and awards. And the charges that the towing company charges for moving the car and storing the car are what the violator pays for.
Okay. Further on the question?
How is that different than the line below with the Fire Chief? Does he tow the car?
Megan?
So it's not setting the fees, it's, it's, so the fees are established by the Select Board. And they're charged by these people. So these are the people, so in D, it was initially the Chief of Police. That's no longer the person. So it's still by the Fire Chief. So they, they, there's another regulation that these people can collect the fees.
I'm still sorry.
I think we've got it. Can we get to the next gentleman? Sir? Does that mean you asked a question?
Yes, the Select Board sets a bunch of fees. Is it important that by the Director of Public Works and by the Chief of Police and by the Fire Chief? Is that important to the bylaw? I don't see how it is.
We're going to answer the question now, and then we'll proceed to the next question. If you want to.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I think that the answer here is that this was a very long and complex process. We took all of these proposed changes. We, we took these bylaws and went to the people that were listed and said, what do you see that you want to change? The police chief came back to us and said, this is an, I'm not in charge of this. Delete me. At that point, we frankly didn't further discuss the Fire Chief and the Department, the Public Works. I think we defaulted, as Colin and Megan explained, to the understanding that the real power was with the Select Board. Not speaking for the committee, but speaking for myself, I don't see that a friendly amendment would necessarily be a negative thing in this because I don't think it changes what's happening. I do think that we run the risk of wordsmithing this thing all night, and that's a problem. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you. Sir? The gentleman with the hat, we've heard the question, so let's move on to the next question, please.
Well, I'd like to make a.
What's the amendment?
To strike all the byes at the beginning of each one of those five lines. So it simply says the for the towing and storage of the.
Maybe.
I don't, I don't think we should be wordsmithing this. There's, you know, the complicated bylaw.
Mr. Moderator, can I address that specific question?
Mr. Gob.
So the reason that those are there is found in Chapter eight, Section thirty point one, and Sections thirty point two of the bylaws. Section thirty point one specifically says that the Director of Public Works. Section 30.1 specifically says that the director of public works is in charge of towing vehicles during snow emergencies. And 30.2 says that the fire chief is in charge of towing vehicles that are in the way of responding vehicles. So by leaving those there, they are consistent with Chapter Eight of the bylaws.
Sir, name and precinct, please.
Mike Elvin, Precinct Two. I guess this might be moot, but I was confused. At first, we got up and said, "There are no fees being charged for these, these towing or violations." And then we're saying that it's the towing company charges. So that would be set by, I assume, a contract. And then now they say there's somewhere else it's saying that there are fees that are being... So I'm, I'm definitely confused as to how this one does not change the others. Why we shouldn't change all, or not.
Okay, is that more of a comment than a question?
No, I mean, I guess, is there, is it a contract that's setting the cost? Or is it these people, other than the police chief, that are setting the cost, the fee?
To the police chief? Chief?
Thanks. So I was actually out in the lobby, so I didn't get the whole part of it. But I will tell you this much, that the state regulates what the cost is for the tow. We have no control over it whatsoever. We have two tow companies that we use, alternate back and forth. We've had them for probably thirty years, no contracts.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we're gonna proceed to the vote. It's moved and seconded that the town vote to amend certain subsections of Chapter Three of the town's general bylaws as set forth in the warrant. All those, or let's do it with the, the clickers. Fifty percent majority required. When you see the green light, green is affirmative, red is opposed. I think we're gonna need a new bingo card for this meeting. Alright, we're gonna retake it. Ready? Go. Green light. Okay, so the system's not working. They're gonna reset the system. Think we could try a voice vote? Alright. All those in, or in the worst-case scenario, as the clerk reminds me, we can stand up and go back to the twentieth century. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries. Well done. Okay, Article forty-one. It is moved and seconded that the town vote to amend certain subsections of Chapter Four of the town's general bylaws as set forth in the warrant. Can we get the recommendation of the select board, Mrs. Prior?
So this specific change was requested by the town manager to add this language, because she does not do all of the permit issuing. So hopefully, this one's okay. It was, her ask to actually better reflect how the work gets done in Town Hall. So we are unanimously favorable action on this one.
Does any town meeting member wanna be heard on this topic? Okay, for the mental health of the moderator, we will try a voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Any opposed? The motion carries. Article forty-two. It is moved and seconded that the town vote to amend certain subsections of Chapter Five of the town's general bylaws as set forth in the warrant. Can we get the recommendation of the select board?
Hi. Select board on this article, Article forty-two, voted three in favor, one opposed, and one abstained. The treasurer-collector is in fact the appropriate title for the work that our treasurer-collector does. And we are in favor of the changes as a board.
Thank you. On the question, Mr. Gerius.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Dean Gerius, Precinct Eight. I think there's a, it's not a typo, but there seems to be a comment that was left in the text. So under Section Ten, constables' term and eligibility, there are two bullets, one of which reads, "Awkward and confusing passive language revised by the present tense." And the second one says, "Appointed constables are routinely not residents of Winchester." I would like to move that we, I assume it's a Scrivener's error, I move that we strike those two bullets.
That's in the background?
No, it's in the background. It's, no, it's in the motion. I have it in the motion, I think.
Mr. Simpson?
We, we accept that friendly amendment. Thank you.
Do we have a motion second? All those in favor?
Aye!
Any opposed?
Hi, Mr. Moderator, Mark Fabelo is Precinct One again. This is more of a, of a question here. The striking of something can and looks like it does change policy here in that the appointed for a term of one year has been stricken, and there's no discussion of term. Is that to say that, that basically the town manager determines the term and the frequency of the reappointment?
Mr. Simpson?
The town manager wishes to get rid of the provision that she must rehire the town clerk, the town engineer, and the town treasurer-collector every March. And would like the opportunity to enter into multiple-year contracts with those senior staff. I'm sorry, excuse me, appointments. Excuse me.
Thank you. Beth Rudolph, town manager.
Thank you. So there are only three municipal employees to which that provision applies. The remainder of our employees are at-will employees without employment contracts. And so these three employees would be a similar condition without that one-year appointment. I can't speak to why that one-year appointment is in the bylaws. I will say I've been the town engineer myself previously. I've worked for the town for twenty years. That annual appointment for the town engineer has been in place as long as I've been with the town. I don't know the history as to why those three specific positions were singled out in the bylaws. But, for example, our DPW director does not have a, a term, a reappointment term. And there are no, for regular municipal employees, there are no employment contracts, aside from myself as town manager, and other appointments by the select board. Hope that answers the question. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Further on the question?
Shannon Scott-Fernaria, Precinct Four. I have a question about process for track changes for us to follow along. The two Scrivener's errors that we just found were not tracked as changes. And I'm concerned that there may be other language that is not being bolded as a, as a change. Can we understand how those got in there? Because otherwise, it kind of draws into question whether there are other things that aren't being highlighted as changes.
To, to the committee, do you wanna speak to that?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. So we reviewed our edits multiple times. The town manager's office was wonderful in sending us drafts. And we caught some of these. We didn't catch them all. Now, the question, I believe, was, is anything, are any other changes in there that aren't bolded? Not to our knowledge.
And we're, we're keeping track.
And we're gonna vote on all the changes, so it's whatever in the warrant.
Yep.
Can I follow up, though? I mean, we could have inadvertently voted for something that wasn't, like, highlighted as a change to the audience? Like, if Mr. Gerius hadn't found those two bullets. Is that correct? Can we just?
That is a possibility.
Okay, thank you.
But this, as we've spoken, there is a lot of public process and vetting that has taken place already on these articles. Sir?
Ann Sarah, Precinct One. Just to follow on, is that I found at least two other places where it bold was missed from an obvious change. And again, no time for public comment input. There was no public comment period. So that in that period, you typically get clean version, and you're able to do automatic checking between the two, which I would have done. Time for it.
Thank you. Mr. Nixon?
Vincent Dixon, Precinct Three. Many of you know I'm a historian as well, so I can answer a brief point here and also make another one. Traditionally, most municipal governments in Massachusetts, and even state government, had one-year terms. Literally everything, including the governor. Governor McCall was actually chained to two years through constitutional amendment. There is a question or a problem here if we're not thinking clearly. And that is, most places, once they went away from one-year term, ordinary election did specify something else. The state has gone to four years. Local municipalities in Boston and Cambridge have two years. If we're not really paying too much attention, we could get into a problem where somebody doesn't come back at some point to get reviewed by the electorate. I don't know whether that's two years or four years or what, but that came up with the town clerk thing as well. These are decent people mostly, who can be trusted for long periods of time, but still, in the sense of accountability, every two or four years ought to be some kind of election or review. The opportunity is if these people are really good, they're gonna win overwhelmingly. If they're really bad, you have an opportunity for somebody to step aside or be removed. So think about the term kind of thing, about the history of one-year terms for everything.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm getting the sense the town meeting is ready for the question. It is moved and seconded that the town vote to amend certain subsections of Chapter Five of the town's general bylaws as set forth in the warrant as amended. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Any opposed? The motion carries. Article forty-four, that the town vote to amend certain subsections of Chapter Seven of the town's general bylaws as set forth in the warrant. Select board's recommendation?
Yes, select board voted favorable action on Article forty-four.
Thank you. Anyone wanna be heard on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Any opposed? The motion carries. Article forty-five. It is moved and seconded that the town vote to amend certain subsections of Chapter Eight of the town's general bylaws as set forth in the warrant. Can we get the recommendation of the select board?
Following on my own score sheet, yes. Article forty-five, public order, select board voted for one, favorable action.
Thank you. Committee of Government Regulations?
We have a friendly amendment to make. There is a Scrivener's error in the Section Five. "No person hawking, peddling, settling, or exposing for sale any article enumerated in Section Three and Four proceeding shall cry 'said wares his wares in the town.'" There's too many "wears." So we ask our own friendly amendment to delete one of the "wears."
Can I get a second on that? Is there any debate on the "wears"? Mr. Wilson, are you sure you don't wanna? Okay. So let's take that amendment and, on a voice vote. All those in favor?
Aye!
Any opposed? The motion carries. Amendment carries? Okay, further on the main motion, Mr. Wilson?
Yeah, Roger Wilson, Precinct One. Through you to the proponents, are sidewalks defined somewhere in the bylaws? Because we have roadways, and typically sidewalks are adjacent to those roadways. We also have paths, and those are, are used differently. And my concern is particularly about trailers for bicycles. I personally have three trailers, one of which is sixteen feet long for bike, for a boat. So I wonder, wonder if, if the sidewalks have been defined here.
To the Committee on Government Regulations, what is a sidewalk?
Don Bradford, Precinct Eight, and obviously a member of the Committee on Government Regulations. I don't think there is a definition of sidewalk, and we actually talked a bit about, we obviously have bike paths, and we have other sort of ways that are public ways. And we made the decision of not adding, in effect, sections into this, into Eight. Obviously, you know, if town meeting decides that they wanna make some changes there to make this more clear, we can. We sort of had the view of modernize and modify versus create entirely new components to the, the regulation based upon our mandate, you know, as the Decennial Review Committee.
Further on the question?
So, sorry there. Bill McGonigal, Select Board, Precinct Three. I'm also an attorney who defends municipalities when they get sued over bad bylaws. I've seen many. And here, there actually is a definition of sidewalks in our bylaws. That's good, you might think. However, and this is what we all need to be thinking about as we move forward, it's in a completely different bylaw. So that definition's actually not incorporated into anything else unless we put it at the front of our bylaws and make sure it's consistent throughout. So as you're looking at these, you have to look at the context of... So as you're looking at these, you have to look at the context of everything. You have to see how a definition is presented and played out through all those different bylaws, and if it's referenced from one to another. It's very difficult and intricate work, and you're going to see more concerns about that going forward, I think. But here, we do have a definition. Whether it actually plays into this use in this bylaw is a different question, and maybe one that needs to be studied by a committee. Yes. In Bylaw Chapter Seventeen, the Regulation of News Tracks, Section One on Definitions, it puts forth that a sidewalk is "that portion of a public way that is set aside for pedestrian travel, roadway, that portion of a public way that is intended for the use of motor vehicles." That's a bad definition, because there's two definitions in that definition. That's a good thing that we maybe want to fix. I don't know if we actually fixed it this time around. But, that's a good example of why this needs a lot of care, a lot of cross-referencing. And the Select Board, we've done our work as best as we can. You know, we're unanimous on some of these, but there's a lot more, too. And you're going to see me up here as some of those get presented, so.
Thank you. Mrs. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Boards and town meeting members and guests, I think, you know, we did, we're not, you know, proud proponents of all our work. We did sort of the best we can. We are seven years late for the Decennial Review. Yeah, I mean, it's seventeen years, is what I mean. So we're seven years off of a ten-year deadline. So I think in some regards, we're trying to do something reasonable. It probably isn't perfect. And, you know, in surgery, we say, you know, best is the enemy of good. And I think sometimes that, you know, that may apply here tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Jarius, I think you, even though you've already spoken on this motion, that was an amendment, so I think you can speak to this.
Actually, Mr. Moderator, I haven't spoken on this article yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I come up here often. I can understand the confusion. So my concern is, so do you have Jarius' precinct date? On Section Twenty-five, there is a change in the definition of what disorderly behavior is. And it is now says, "No person shall engage in behavior that threatens the safety and well-being of others." And so, I find those terms vague. And so I would like to know, is there a commonly agreed-upon definition of what well-being means? I can kind of guess. It's physical. But what does well-being mean?
To Town Council, do you have a definition?
So I wish, as a municipal practitioner, that every single possibility had a definition and was fully explained. But so much when it comes to municipal law and the defense of municipal decisions relates to the broad discretion that municipal actors have. And in the exercise of that, in terms of implementing a standard such as "for the well-being," there's generally a reasonableness standard with discretion afforded to the municipal actors that are doing their work underneath a particular bylaw. So, yeah, but I wish that, in some respects, we could define every single standard of review every time. Municipal laws would be really long, and we'd be at this for a really long time.
Thank you. Through the moderator to, I'm not, well, maybe just to town meeting. What I'm concerned about is that some municipalities have broad language, which has been weaponized against some of their residents. They've been taken to court by the ACLU in particular over the last several years. And after a lot of litigation, they have lost. And I want to make sure that whatever we put into here is, has enough guardrails that we can ensure that people will have the ability to express their opinions, which may make some people uncomfortable. And so I don't know how we define well-being to allow freedom of speech. The previous language talked a lot about, well, there were obviously, I think, problems with the First Amendment rights of someone. But here, this is, I'm, I don't, I wish I could rely upon the goodwill of the town, but I, you know, I don't know what will happen in ten or twenty years when I'm not around. So, that's my concern. And if there isn't a better term to use then, I guess we'll just wait and see what happens if the town gets sued.
Okay. Thank you. I'm getting the sense the town meeting is ready for the question. Oh, one more. Ms. Court, Precinct Five.
Thank you, and sorry. To Pamela Court, Precinct Five, Arlington Street. To the point that Mr. Jarius, Dr. Jarius raised about that, I agree that it's vague and that it could be weaponized. And so I would like to make an amendment to strike well-being from that and just leave safety.
Second. Does anybody like to speak to that amendment? Want to proceed to a vote on it? Committee on Government Regulations?
Karen Conley, Precinct Three. Mr. Moderator, through you to Town Council. What would Town Council's recommendation be on that?
So, these are policy questions. So I'm not going to tell town meeting whether they should or shouldn't strike in well-being from this. I will state that there are hundreds of statutes and thousands of bylaws that use terms like health, safety, and welfare. And without it being defined, and without those being somehow injurious on their face to constitutional rights, whether or not a municipal enforcement agent violates someone's constitutional rights is entirely a different question. And that could come up under safety as well as well-being. So, again, I'm not going to take a position on whether to remove it or not remove it. But the continued inclusion of it doesn't give me concern with respect to it somehow violating rights. The actions of those enforcing this would be something that, you know, could always be subject to constitutional review, no matter how mild that action would be.
Thank you. Mr. Olubov?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, thank you. I have a question. If somebody were to use an air horn at two in the morning in the middle of the street, waking up the whole neighborhood, that doesn't seem to violate safety. However, if we don't have well-being in there, which is what this amendment has, maybe the Town Council could answer if there's another way that that could be prevented, or if by removing well-being, using an air horn in the middle of the street at 3:00 a.m. would be now permitted.
Again, I'm going to defer to town meeting as to the scope of disorderly behavior. Obviously, these things are all subject to enforcement and a certain amount of subjectivity. And those that enforce these things should be properly trained to know where the line is. You know, again, generally, do I see language all the time in similar bylaws that talk about engage in behavior that would threaten the health, safety, and well-being of, or welfare instead of well-being? I see that all the time. So, again, I'm, we could rewrite this and tinker with it and have an exception to it that protects people's constitutional rights and add that caveat in here. And I'm happy to help the town craft that language. But in review of this particular language, nothing about it struck me as being illegal on its face. And certainly, I don't think the Attorney General that reviews this language is going to find it problematic either. So, otherwise, Mario, you know, I think people can tinker as they see fit. And I'm happy to comment on that tinkering as to whether or not it falls on either side of the legal-illegal line. But all this kind of language is pretty typical.
Mr. Mueller, can I have a follow-up on that?
Yes.
So, I think that whether the word "well-being" is there or not, somebody who choose, I am concerned about the violation of all of our constitutional rights. I think that somebody who chooses to violate our constitutional rights will not stop because the word "well-being" is not in the bylaw. So, you know, whatever action is taken will be decided by a court, whether the word "well-being" is there or not. However, I oppose this amendment, because I think the word "well-being" should be there, because there are other actions, to me, that constitute disorderly conduct that are not necessarily endangering the safety of a person.
Thank you. Further on the?
Covers it. Thanks.
Further on the motion to amend? Okay.
Ann Sarah, Precinct One. We could just refine to the Massachusetts Disorderly Conduct Criminal Code, which, or general law, apparently, which covers it. But here we are, writing something on the floor, which is exactly what I don't want to do. And that's why I really feel that all of this is premature. But that would be a, perhaps potentially GLC. Chapter Two Seventy-two, Section Fifty-three defines disorderly conduct, and perhaps we should just refer to it.
Okay. Mr. Bagnani?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator, Parsbani, Precinct Eight. I would agree with the last speaker on the side that the language really shouldn't threaten any free speech rights and actually should be an improvement on the existing language. I think we're focusing a lot on safety and well-being, but we're not looking at what's been removed, which is the word "language." So, before, disorderly conduct included obscene, profane, and abusive language, that's taken out, and now it's behavior. So that should actually be much more protective of free speech than the existing language that's in here.
Thank you. Is town meeting ready to vote on the amended, the amendment? Okay. All those in? Absolutely. Just worried about the carpet in between the podium and your seat, because school's expensive enough.
So, our Committee on Government Regulations voted unanimously against the proposed amendment.
Thank you. All right, we're ready for the question. All those in favor of the amendment to strike the word "well-being"? Say aye? All those opposed?
Aye.
The motion fails. Are we ready yet for the main motion? Okay. Article forty-five, it is moved and seconded that the town vote to amend certain subsections of Chapter Eight as the town's general bylaws set forth in the warrant as amended, the First Amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay. The biggest topic of the night, the dog-leash law. Article Forty-seven, it is moved and seconded that the town vote to amend certain subsections. We skipped Forty-six, because we're going to talk about that more in depth. I took that off the list. We'll come back to it. Forty-seven, the town, it is moved and seconded that the town vote to amend certain subsections of Chapter Ten of the town's general bylaws as set forth in the warrant. Can we get a recommendation from the Select Board?
Yes. Select Board recommended favorable action on Article Forty-seven.
Thank you. Does anybody in the town meeting want to be heard on this article? Okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion passes. Article Forty-eight. It is moved and seconded that the town vote to amend certain subsections of Chapter Eleven, the town's general bylaws as set forth in the warrant. Can we get the recommendations of the Select Board?
So, first unfavorable of the night. Article Forty-eight with anti-litter. The recommendation was unfavorable by a vote of four to one. There are some concerns that there are words missing, that it somehow only applies to town-owned containers, because the word "public" in one dot two was removed. And just some general confusion on some of the language.
Thank you. Does anyone want to be spoke, be heard on this topic? Dr. Jarius?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just go by Mr. Jarius. So, through you to the Select Board. I was wondering if you could be a little more specific about the issues you found with the language?
All right. To Mr. Jarius. There's a number, in my opinion, here. I'll try to do some of the more important ones before the smaller ones. First, the edits to one point two, the way I read them, create new liabilities for the town that did not exist before. The edits to one point three subsumes the definitions of commercial handbill and non-commercial handbill into one another. Therefore, either making non-commercial handbills no longer a thing, or commercial handbills no longer a thing. Those were previously very distinctive, and they are no longer. The edits to Chapter One Point Five, which has to do with litter. By striking the word "tends to," it creates a brand-new standard, which means now it's not just what tends to create, but is only that which actually creates. More concerning, maybe, is the edit that follows there, where if you strike the language that's proposed, it will read, "Posited as herein prohibited, creates public health, safety, and welfare." That's something we want to do. This is supposed to be about anti-littering. By taking that language out, it just makes the whole section make no sense. Personally, I would make, you know, amendments as well to make sure that litter is properly protected, not only from weather, but also from animal life. There's a typo in Section Ten. It should be throwing or distributing commercial, not throwing or distribution. There's language, I think, missing at the very bottom of page seventy-five, the underlined addition to Section Ten, where it says, "However, distributing non-commercial handbills without charge is permitted." The language "to the receiver" should be added in after "without charge." That's language that was in the original section there. But by striking it, it takes away the fact of who's being charged, which makes it ambiguous and therefore dangerous, in my opinions. There's a period missing. I know this is a small one, at the end of Section Fourteen. And at the very beginning of it, in the definition of aircraft, there is a canon of statutory construction called exclusio unius, something, something Latin. If you make a list in a bylaw, and you do not keep it open-ended, but you keep it closed, the list is therefore closed, and it only applies to that which you specifically name. Here, by defining aircraft as helicopters, drones, and lighter-than-air dirigibles, and balloons, we are omitting things like planes. It would be a much better amendment to one point one if you just struck the whole second section, second sentence there. And so the Select Board voted unfavorable action, because that's a lot of edits. And that doesn't even get into the policy issues of some of these. The Select Board, I think, was favorable towards the idea of referring this to committee, so it could be better studied and cleaned up and brought back. But as it is, I think I've listed off not only substantive edits, but typographical edits, but more edits that we'd really want to deal with tonight, which is why we took unfavorable action on it. Does that answer your question, Mr. Jarius?
Thank you. I guess through the moderator, to the Select Board member, thank you. I would like to move, to make a motion for indefinite postponement of Article Forty-eight.
Okay. Do we have a second? Is there any debate?
Bill Swanton, Precinct Five. I would prefer to see us postpone it to a time certain and have an edited version of that, given all of the very precise edits that the selectmen put there. And, you know, put it somewhere at the end of the town meeting to actually get here. Because I think there's a lot of good stuff in here. There are a few weird things. And I think just indefinitely postponing it, just... I think just indefinitely postponing it just kicks it out at least till fall town meeting.
Okay. Well, that's the motion right now, so any more debate on that, and we'll vote on that, and then we'll see what happens. Okay. It is moved and seconded that Article 48 be indefinitely postponed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Is it working? I need a voice expert and a Latin expert, if anybody's available. Ready to go? Okay. When the green light turns on, please take out your clicker, and we're going to take a v-voter vote. Take a vote.
Mr. Moderator, could you slide this slide?
So, it is moved and seconded that Article 48 be indefinitely postponed. Yes is to postpone it, a no is to continue on. Okay.
Yes, and I have to admit that I inadvertently pushed the yes button. But I would move that we postpone this to a time certain. I guess it would be the second, is it the second-to-last article in the town meeting, and ask that the selectmen come up with a set of edits to this, to address the concerns that they have.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the motion, the amendment, or the postponement carries. So, Article 49 will be discussed in greater detail later on. We're going to go to Article 50.
Mr. Moderator, I think we've now had three articles moved to be second from the last. Can you, I can imagine how that works, but could you actually give us some idea of how that actually will work?
Yeah, let me just write it out for myself so I don't get it wrong. So, the last four articles will be in order 1931, 48, and 56, which has to be the last of town meeting. So, I guess it would be based on timing, whatever is voted on to be second pushes everything else up one. Okay. Article 50, it is moved and seconded that the town vote to amend certain subsections of Chapter 14 of the town's general bylaws as set forth in the warrant. Can we get the recommendation of the select board?
Hello again for another lesson in statutory construction. So, the select board is in favor of this, or voted favorable action on Article 50 contingent upon a very specific edit. If you look in Section 3.5, A, B, C, D, the subparts there, they have added in "and/or." When it comes to legal interpretation, that is impossible. And and/or are mutually exclusive. One is conjunctive, one is disjunctive. When you're putting lists like this together for the sake of legal application, you use an "and" when you want A, B, C, and D applied to something. If you want just a selection, you do A, B, C, or D. You cannot have both. The select board is in favor of the edits to 3.6 Sub-B, but otherwise, we ask that there be a motion to amend and to strike the edits proposed for 3.5 Sub-A, Sub-B, Sub-C, and Sub-D, leaving it simply as A, B, C, or D.
Further on the, further on the question? Commitment, Government Regulations?
Joan Miller from the Decennial Review. Not to be fresh, but we might have a mud wrestling between the two attorneys because that was added to us by Jay. Do you want to comment, Jay? I mean, I don't think anyone on our committee actually cares all that much about the and/or's. We sort of just did what we were told on that one. But we're happy to be told differently.
Jay, no offense, I think I'd take Bill in that fight.
Bill is part of my appointing authority. I, I'm comfortable either way. So, how about that for wishy-washy? I think either, if it was, if it was and/or, or just or, I think it would be capable of a reasonable interpretation in every instance. I certainly don't have any objection to leaving it just as or, as Bill suggested. My edit there to add the and is it could be some combination of those and to make that, but again, I think we can nitpick. The fact that you allowed me, as the COGR, to nitpick your stuff, your bylaws, then I was certainly going to do it. And now, I think that you're allowing Bill to do the same, I think, is laudable, so I could support it either way.
So, I have a question for Mr. Nixon. Are the wrestling mats still upstairs, or have they been brought off-premise for construction?
Just honestly, maybe just a point of order, Mr. Moderator. I thought in the presentation, there was reference that Article 50 might create a little extra work for the Historical Commission, and would just appreciate if there's a representative that might just weigh in on their disposition towards Article 50 when appropriate.
On behalf of the Historical Commission, Mrs. McCarthy.
Thank you, Michelle McCarthy, Precinct 7, also a member of the Historic Commission. We did discuss this, and our view is that the changes do not create a significant burden on the commission. Just a little bit of a burden, but we're okay with that. Thank you.
Okay. Question, to Rinalia, from the Planning Board. I don't know what hat you're wearing today.
I thought I'd wear...
Speaking on behalf of...
On behalf of the Planning Board, we reviewed, this is the first article from Government Regulations that we reviewed and had an opinion on. We reviewed this because it could impact potential resources where the Board is the special permit granting authority. We voted favorable action by a vote of four to zero with one absence. This article seems to clean up and codify practice and add some more details that we think were helpful, so we supported that again via a vote of four oh. Thank you.
Mr. Jarius?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I, there seems to be the addition of a footnote, which appears on page 82, at the top of page 82, and at least it looks like it was added as a footnote to D in Section 3.5. Maybe I'm misreading that, but it's, since it's in bold, it seems to be new, and it seems, it would appear that this is adding a definition of what the criteria are for determination of historical significance. So, Mr. Moderator, through you to the Historical Commission, could you please, could they please comment on what that phrase means and whether it changes anything that is any current practice?
From the Historical Commission, while we're touched up.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Though I am no longer a member of the Historic Commission, I was for 16 years, and I was part of the commission in 2016 when we rewrote this bylaw. The original footnote made reference to the federal law on which this was based. The clarification with some back and forth with the Committee on Government Regulations just expanded that with a little bit more information rather than what we had had before. If you can, if you happen to have Chapter 14 handy, you'll see that this is just a little bit better. It was an improvement on explaining where the source of these, this bylaw came from.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Sarah?
Hi. I just need some clarification. First, the footnote should not have been bolden, emboldened. Second, grammatically, logically, and apparently legally, I want to make clear what the change should be. The, all of the and/or's should be removed, and only one or should be after C. So, it's nothing, comma, nothing, comma, nothing, comma, and then the last one is or. That's the correct version. I think our town council said something like, it's okay if they're all or. It is not okay if they're all or. It should be nothing, 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 or. And so, we have to make clear what that amendment is.
So, that motion has not been made yet. Would you like to make the motion?
I make a motion to remove, to the original language, yeah, in 3.5, in Section 3.5.
So, it would just be to kill the article, right?
It does not kill the article because there's 3.6, which I also have a question on.
So, we have a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yay.
For the amended article, the select board amendment, basically.
Point of order, could you make, I think the motion was to amend up Section 3.5, nothing to do with 3.6.
The footnotes in 3.5.
And it's new? So, do we have that footnote somewhere to read? Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's on the bottom of the slide here.
All right, so you're right. It's a no.
All right, let's hear from the Committee on Government Regulations.
Yeah, I think if you want to do the and/or, you know, remove, go back to the original language in 3.5, with the exception of that footnote which refers down to the law.
So, you want to make that motion?
No, I, well, you go for it.
All right. Well, we, all right, what's the correct decorum here?
So, you make the motion. I think there's some confusion on the last motion. Let's make the, a motion to...
Okay, the motion is to remove the words "and/or" from 3.5 point A, B, 3.5 point A and B, and the word "and" from 3.5 point C.
Second. So, it's moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Jennifer Haley, Precinct 7, just trying to get some clarity. In the preceding paragraph in 3.5, there are also two mentions of and/or. Are they okay to stay? Do they need to go?
The maker of the motion, it's up to you.
Where? Where? I don't like writing on the floor.
Well, let's make a motion to take it back to the original, 3.5, back to the original.
The original still has and/or in the preceding paragraph.
What preceding paragraph?
The, right before that FTM, Article 3, if you look before that, and/or association, and the line before that, and/or culture. I don't have a position on it, I just think we need to be consistent.
It's not bad there. The problem is the list.
I think that's different.
The problem is with the list.
Yeah, it functions differently. I don't think that...
It functions differently, yeah.
Do you want to speak to it?
So, again, this is why bylaws are very tricky, and I completely understand and respect your question. What happens here is after the, everything that precedes that and with the colon is a whole separate consideration.
Right.
So, you go through the analysis of the beginning of the bylaw there, and those and/or's. And, you know, it's not perfect, but it wasn't a proposed change here. You know, should it be changed? Maybe that's why they should go to a committee. But the, but once you hit that and, you get into a separate analysis, which is the optional application of subparts A through D. And so, it's not contingent, A through D is not contingent or based upon what comes prior to that and. They're two separate approaches, two separate analyses that you have to do. But you're right that the existence of the and/or's in the beginning of the paragraph leads to ambiguity. But there's no proposed edit here to make a change to that right now. If there were, that would be a whole brand-new motion, we'd open up the floor for debate, but it might even be better just to send it to committee or vote on what we have right now.
We voted to amend it already, so we're just saying, yeah, so the, the, the motion, the article has been amended. We're going to vote on that. That's the, now, to you on the amended article.
Stephanie Zaramba, Precinct 2. Mr. Moderator, procedural question. Where there's confusion, and if the consensus of town meeting is, we like the spirit of what we're trying to do, but we don't think it's ready yet, and we would like further work done on it, are we best served to postpone to the end of this town meeting, indefinitely postpone, refer back to the committee, or something else? Because I think we're using different motions, maybe not to accomplish exactly what certain people are trying to do.
Let's hear from the committee.
Well, thanks, Joan Miller. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I, I think that there's been a lot of good discussion, but actually, all we've done, all we've changed here is just the, cleaned up the and/or's in those ABCs that were added at the recommendation of the town council. That's, now we're taking it back out, and that's it. And I really think we've heard from, you know, we've heard from members of the Historical Commission that it's not going to be more work, they think we've improved the footnote description. I mean, I think it's all good.
Sorry.
Well, I guess to enter, the work of the Decennial Review Committee is complete, right?
No.
You guys, we can always change bylaws. We could come back, a citizen's petition could change, attempt to change a bylaw at the next town meeting. The Government Regulations, the Committee on Government Regulations can constantly, you know, offer changes. We could come up with a different schedule. If Decennial isn't working, we could do one bylaw for every town meeting, as somebody has constantly told me over the last three months. So, so, yeah, so it's up to, I think postponing them does not give us a lot of time to complete the work at town meeting, because to a time certain at the end of town meeting, I think we should either wait till the fall or something else.
Thank you.
This young lady?
Hi, Meredith Crowley, Precinct 1. I'm also a member of the Decennial Review Committee, but I do have a question on this that I don't believe we had worked out, and I, it's two-part. I'd like to know from the proponent, the rationale. What are you looking for in terms of, in 3.6B? What would the rationale look like? And since it's a written report, as I said, what is required in that rationale?
I think that's a question for the Historical...
Thanks, Meredith. We did have more slides on this, but we, in the bulk view, we...
But is that a question for the Historical Commission or for...
This is for Joan, and then I wanted to hear from the Historic Commission. But this is, Ann has reminded me, this is 3.6. Are we there yet on 3.6?
Yeah, we've amended 3.5, and we're discussing the whole article, so...
So, I can talk about it? Okay.
So, I, what, in the slide example that I provided, even again, it was after speaking to Jacqueline Lemenerje, who was the chair of the Historic Commission up until recently, that most often they use criteria C, so 3.5C is frequently used. So, what the rationale might just say, it's been deemed historically significant, you know, refer to 3.5C, and you could put in the wording or not, and that would be the extent of the rationale. But, you know, obviously, I'd be leaving it to them, but it doesn't, that's as long as I thought it needed to be, you know, the group thought it needed to be.
Well, I look at this, and it says that it has to be completed in 10 days. So, that was, what I was wondering is, maybe the historic, former member of the Historic Commission could comment on what it is, how, what is the written response that he would use, and how that would be facilitated in that 10-day period. Otherwise, I don't want to see it be a crunch time because they have to prepare something.
Okay. To Historic Commissioner Emeritus, Mr. Lemenerje.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
As a procedural matter, what the Historical Commission does once a decision has been made, within a day or two, we send a letter to the applicant informing them that the Historical Commission has imposed a delay on their application for a demolition permit. Generally, we have not been explicit for that reason, because the applicant was in attendance and heard our discussion. And I think this is, as Ms. McCarthy said, this is not a heavy lift. It's simply a referral back to the previous, um, section in the bylaw where we spell out, spell out our choices, our, our determination of what makes this historically significant. So it's just, it's just adding an, an additional sentence to the letter that we always write anyway.
Thank you. Is everybody, uh, Ms. Sarah, you've spoken on this already. Does anybody else want to be spoken before we hear from people for the second term? Okay, Ms. Sarah?
I have a question perhaps for the town council. I like the idea of merely stating, restating A, B, C, or D, restating the words of that. Because my question was, if the, if they get into rationale, the Historical Commission gets into rationale, wouldn't that open up liability for the town? Because I'm thinking that if I was somebody who was disturbed by that decision, I would rip apart that written. I would take that written opinion and just rip it apart in court. So wouldn't that open up liability, whereas now we have none?
To Town Council.
Demolition delay bylaws like this are, are pretty common in, in every town. So, no, almost every town. So the notion that it be in writing was probably to provide people with more rights and certainty as to understand what the rationale for any particular decision of the Historical Commission is. These stat, these kinds of bylaws are perfectly legal. They do cause agita for someone that wants to do some demolition work on their house, but they've been determined to be legal and are routinely approved by the Attorney General. I, I think the addition of in writing is, certainly provides more clarity and certainty for anyone who feels that the Historic Commission may have overstepped, rather than leaving it up to perhaps a phone call to the building commissioner.
Okay. So we have an amended motion, I'm sorry, amended article. I'm sensing the town meeting is ready for that question. It is moved and seconded that the town vote to amend certain subsections of Chapter 14 of the town's general bylaws as set forth in the warrant as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes. Article 51. We're going to do this one, and then we will take a break. It is moved and seconded that the town vote to amend certain subsections of, I don't know. It is moved and seconded that the town vote to amend sections of Chapter 15 of the town's general bylaws as set forth in the warrant. Can we get the recommendation of the Select Board?
Select Board recommended favorable action, understanding that Board of Health requested this change, and as Ms. Blackwell described, there's more robust language in state law. The vote was four in favor, one abstention, but the ultimately favorable recommendation.
Thank you. Are there any other boards and committees that would like to speak to this?
Question from a member.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, Chris Nixon, Precinct 1. I had intended to rise to make a friendly motion. Having read the statute, I believe Ms. Blackwell was referring to mass general law, Chapter 270, Section 22, which is titled prohibition of smoking in public places. It is somewhat similar to Chapter 15 in our bylaw in that it's filled with definitions, prohibitions, obligations for posting signs. But there were two elements of the statute that jumped out at me that I had some concern about. So with respect to enforcement, our bylaw, Section 4, is clear that the Board of Health or its agent shall enforce the prohibition of smoking in public places. The state statute actually says the local Board of Health, the Department of Public Health, the local inspection department, or the equivalent, a municipal government or its agent, and the Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission shall enforce. So I interpret the statute as being deliberately vague so that municipalities can choose who our enforcement authority would be. And I feel like the bylaw is clear in that regard. And then, secondly, with respect to violations and penalties, there is a section in the state statute. It establishes a minimum fine of $100 for each violation. But it does go on to say, "In a city or town having an ordinance or bylaw that imposes a fine greater than the fine imposed by this section, the ordinance or bylaw shall prevail." So I, again, read that to say there's a state threshold, but local government can set a higher penalty. And we do in Section 5, 5.3. So I had intended to make a friendly motion to strip everything out of this, but basically leave 4 and 5 with updated references to the statute. But my understanding here, sort of late tonight, is that beyond what is in the bylaw, we may have in Winchester Board of Health policies or regulations that actually do govern enforcement and the assessment of penalties. And I wondered if, Mr. Moderator, I could ask our Board of, uh, Public Health Director, Jen Murphy, if she could just clarify, because we're effectively taking this section out of the bylaw, what instruments remain, to be sure we're clear in terms of who the enforcement authority is, and that we're also clear we still have the ability to set and adjust fines, and who makes that determination.
Commissioner Murphy?
Hi, thank you. Thank you for the question, Chris. So it is through the statute, as well as the state regulations as a result of that statute, that clarify that the local Board of Health has the authority for enforcement for smoking in public places. Additionally, the Board of Health has, uh, they adopted in 2015 a prohibition on further clarifying smoking in public places as well, which also confers authority, obviously, to their agent, who is me, who would enforce that. Regarding the fines, we do have in our local Board of Health regulation, the ability to fine for first offense, second offense, third offense, and it is $100 through $300. So we do have that ability to fine as well.
Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. I totally support this. I just wanted to be clear that although there is a state statute, it's very vague with respect to some specific local decisions, so that we clearly still have instruments in place that give us that authority. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Since that town meeting is ready for the question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Um, so it is now 8:37. I will ask that everybody come back so that we can continue to do the work, because we are pretty low on, on head count right now, and we don't want to lose our quorum, and then we'll have to do this another night. So we will be in recess until, um, nine o'clock. And the Girl Scouts, the Girl Scouts need to go home soon, so go, go there now.
Evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Alan Ayden. We are here at the Winchester High School, and this is the second session of Winchester's Spring Town Meeting. Some pretty dry stuff here. Uh, first article considered was Article 21 to set the new water and sewer rates. Um, we heard that the town needs to increase these rates by nine and a half percent each of the next two years, but also that these rates are very weather-dependent. Hot weather, hot, dry weather increases the water usage. Uh, cooler, wet weather decreases it. Um, we heard that the Mass Water Resources, MWRA, assessment increased by 18 and a half percent this year. And without this increase, there would be a $900,000 deficit. Uh, we heard that the average household with a lawn irrigation system would go up about $72. That was passed. Well, our new moderator showed us a football stadium graphic to see how close we were getting to the end zone, which is a, a while off. We got a bunch of government regulations to go through tonight, and that's what the rest of the meeting was waiting through. See if I can summarize some of these. These were put forth by the Committee on Government Regulations to clarify and modify our town's bylaws. Article 40 was, um, setting a new election date on Saturdays instead of the Tuesdays. Uh, and a lot of these were also just clarifying current practices. Gave towing responsibilities. Um, let's see, let's see, town meeting, uh, town meeting member Bob Deering said these were too complicated and moved to indefinitely postpone them, but that motion failed, um, and the amended regulations were passed. Article 41 allows the town manager to certain, um, for, to allow a designee for certain, certain jobs. In other words, uh, some of the duties that were only provided by the, or only performed by the town manager, the town manager can designate someone for doing that. That passed. Um, we heard that a lot of, there were several positions in town, uh, such as town engineer and collective treasurer and the town clerk, had to be appointed every year by the town manager. Um, so this was a, uh, an article to allow the town manager to appoint for more than one year. Um, it clarifies the treasurer-collector's position as one person, and, uh, that passed. Article 44 removed some gender-specific items in the water and sewer regulations. That passed. Article 45 dealt with public order. Um, updates some of the current procedures, cleans up some of the pronouns. Um, one town meeting member had a problem with the term well-being that might be limiting free speech, uh, and wanted that struck. That motion failed. Article 45 was passed. Uh, there's some, let's see, Article 47, we skipped Article 46 for the time being. Dog leash rules on Article 47 were passed. Article 48 was some, uh, regulations on anti-littering. The Select Board approved that there were too many edits. Uh, there was a motion to indefinitely postpone, which was failed, which failed. So, but this, um, looks like this article was postponed, according to my notes here. I believe it was. Okay. Article 50, even the moderator was getting a little confused at this point, so bear with me. Article 50, criteria of historic buildings and demolition hearings. Um, the Select Board said there were too many and, quote, and slash ors in these, and suggested they were be removed. Uh, town meeting approved that, and the overall article passed. Article 51, dealing with smoking regulations and nicotine project, products. Um, that whole bylaw was deleted because it was superseded by state regulations. Uh, we're coming up on Article 52 next, um, as we slog through these recommendations. If you, uh, if you got a warrant in the mail, you'd see there were a lot of articles, 54 articles, I believe. So we're working our way through them. Uh, town meeting's in recess at the moment, and I'll be back to the best of my ability to summarize what's happened tonight. So stay with us.
Article fifty-two, the fifth rail, the third rail of Winchester Politics, news racks. It is moved and seconded that the town vote to amend certain subsections of chapter seventeen of the town's general bylaws as set forth in the warrant. Can we get the recommendation of the school, of the Select Board? Fifty-two.
News racks, yes. Favorable action five-zero. There, there are some definitions that we noted in the director line that permit and is also defined, but we think generally the regulation article is favorable and we're good with the changes. And, under section four, under five B four, I think, on the top of page eighty-nine, that via US Mail email and by telephone, you should, we should not be striking the word notice. It should be noticed to the news rack's owner, so that, to be consistent. So, thank you, Bill, and thank you, GovRex.
Do we have a motion to amend?
So, move, move to amend the proposed edits first by striking the surplusage that follows the definition of director, specifically the language that reads permit dash certificate of compliance issued by the director, which is not part of the definition of director and is instead print, defined below under permit, and to strike the edit to section five, sub B, sub four, no longer striking the word notice following telephone to maintain consistent language with the rest of the bylaw.
Okay. Is there any discussion of the amendment? Oh, second, good. First from the Committee on Government Regulations.
We agree with, we, we agree with the motion to amend.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Miller for precinct six.
Yes, can I make a, ask for a further friendly amendment to the one that just was made to strike the second repeated definition of roadway at the top of page eighty-eight? You'll see there's roadways at the very top, then in the sidewalk definition, the definition of roadway is there a second time.
Are you amendable? Yes? Everybody agrees seconded? Okay. All those in favor of the amended amendment? Any opposed? The amendment is amended. Do you think we have a, is that okay? Yeah, we have to vote. Now, going back to the original amendment, all those in favor?
Mr. Moderator?
Yes?
Can I still discuss?
Sure.
Yeah. So, in the definition of the director, do you have that on the?
No, this is a...
Okay, so it looks like the director of public works of the town of Winchester or his a designee? What does his a designee mean?
Yeah. It's a...
Or a...
Okay, so we can, so I move to amend to remove the word his from the definition of director.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, or the amendment carries. So you got that. So, we're gonna go back to the original amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment carries. So, sensing that town meeting's ready for the amended article, is moved and seconded that town vote to amend certain sections of seventeen from the town's general bylaws as set forth in the warrant as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Article fifty-three, is moved and seconded that the town vote to amend certain subsections of chapter eighteen of the town's bylaw as set forth in the warrant. Can we get a recommendation from the Select Board?
So this article, public shade trees, was unfavorable by a vote of three to two. This is the third town meeting that we've been tweaking, this particular bylaw. There's changing committee members, which, mind you, the Select Board appoints, which we're happy to appoint, but we just thought this, this perhaps needs either referred to committee or just some additional time. The committee is growing, we keep revisiting permanent street trees, and while we're in favor of street trees and public shade trees, and we just worked with the committee to do regulations, this bylaw seems to be amended each time we come before town meetings, so maybe there's a more comprehensive way to think about the composition and what the group's focus is. So it was unfavorable, but a close one, at three to two.
Thank you. Are there any other boards or commissions that want to be heard, the planning board? Mr. Vernalia?
Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator. The planning board voted favorable action by a three to one vote with one absence. Public shade trees impact the streetscape and fall into an area of the board's interest. Although the design review committee rep is proposed to be removed, we hope and are assured that the committee will continue to consult with the DRC rep as needed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Miller? Yeah, you can come up and speak.
Hi, David Miller, a chair of the Permanent Street Tree Committee. Yes, the Select Board is correct, this is a further modification to the membership of the tree committee. That membership, the request for increasing the membership derives from, in part, the information I presented to you at the, under Article One, at the start of this meeting on Monday, which is quantifying, should be quantifying what the status of Winchester's trees are, appreciating the level of effort that will be required to deal with that. It allows us to increase the number of members so that we can meet off-cycle with working groups who will take on the larger... groups who will take on the larger tasks that the committee needs to face, and we're not stuck in a cycle with five members of having to only really meet once a month and get our work done. So this allows us to amplify the amount of work we can get done in a finite period of time to address the issues that we've already identified. Further, we have multiple members, oh, sorry, multiple would-be members who've expressed interest in joining the committee, so there are in fact bodies to put into those additional positions even as I speak at this point in time. And then I will also add, there is an element where currently there's four representatives of other committees on the me, the, uh, the committee and one at-large member. And frankly, it is occasionally the case where representatives are merely representatives as distinct from active members, and the idea of increasing the number of at-large members allows us to have people who have intentionally raised their hand and say, I wanna work on trees. And so getting to seven allows us to accomplish that, so that's why we propose this change.
Thank you. Please state your name and precinct.
Marah Sullivan, precinct one. Question through you to the proponent, why was the design review committee position eliminated from this bylaw?
To the Committee on Government Regulations?
May we defer to the conservation?
Yes.
Actually, tree committee. Um, there, well, it was a, a decision that was reached after multiple conversations with the design review committee, and their, their, their role in the committee is historical one, which dates from the time the committee was initially established when their attendance, if you will, made sense because of the individuals who were involved at that time. As the years have progressed, and this now twelve years since this committee was formed, their interest as a group has waned, attendance was a problem, to be perfectly honest, and when asked whether they had someone else they could put forward to join the committee, they said, we're not interested. And so it was their election that led us to this decision.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. Any other town meeting members want to be heard? Okay, we're ready for the question. Has moved and seconded that the town vote to amend certain subsections of chapter eighteen of the town's general bylaws as set forth in the warrants. All those in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion passes. Fifty-four, is moved and seconded that the chapters of the code of bylaws to the town of Winchester as set forth in the warrant. Select board?
Unanimous favorable action. This makes a lot of sense, it makes the town clerk's life easier to index and maintain bylaws as they move forward and as their updates are happening, so this one was unanimous favorable.
Thank you. Anybody want to be heard on this? Okay, we're ready for the question. All those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Article fifty-five, is moved and seconded that chapters of the code of bylaws of the town of Winchester as set forth in the warrant.
Similar to the previous article, town clerk have requested this, it does make kind of the maintenance of the bylaws easier, so favorable again, five-zero.
Thank you. Looks like we're ready for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it. Motion passes. Now, we've completed the group, as we're calling it, we're gonna go back in order to Article thirty-seven. On behalf of the Committee on Government Regulations, Mary Crowley.
So that's two, which one was I thinking? Thirty-six, thirty-eight, thirty-three, and.
Well, that's mine, I'm going to this one. Let's go to the beginning, go to the top, yes, slide one.
Which is that?
Mm-hmm, that's it, just leave it right there.
Perfect.
Where, which, how do you, what do I do?
So you can do.
Do I use the mouse?
Of course it's spinning. There we go.
How do I switch them?
You just use the left and right arrow here.
Left goes back.
And right goes forward.
Okay.
What's that?
I guess I am. Good evening, everybody. My name's Meredith Crowley, precinct one, Decennial Review Committee. So I was given chapter one, and this chapter is the introduction to the bylaws, and it outlines the rules and procedures, defining key terms, specifying time, number, gender, et cetera. Let's see if I'm going, I, see if I can figure that. When we looked at this chapter as a committee, how do we go about reviewing this chapter? There was collaboration, discussion of what was needed to be done, beginning with the town clerk, and, who is very well schooled on the bylaws. She asked for clarification on terms like town agency, town office, and town officer, and deleting terms like bulletin boards and adding new terms to reflect current practices like town website. The town archivist commented on the presentation, and the town attorney edited the definitions. Our bylaws are sort of unique in the pres, um, because it incorporate, incorporates provisions or sections from the charter. Charter Article seven, which includes references to general laws, computation of times, number So the, just going back and forth between them, and I looked at other communities and how they put their, these, their chapter ones together, they brought a lot of their definitions in, and we were going back and forth between the charter and the bylaws. So, it is the charter definitions that are merged into the bylaw definitions that is the most impactful. And here we have the different definitions. We have some overlap, there are about five that have the same, there's some variation to the definition. Most terms brought into the bylaws had some revision, like adding a citation for the mass general law, one was deleted, and for, of the definitions, one was deleted and four no change. So here's an example of how we changed out one of the charter definitions, and from the charter, the words town meeting shall mean the representative, representative town meeting of the town established by Article Two. And that hyperlink, that little two, goes back into the charter and lists all the elements of a representative town meeting. And it was edited to town meeting, uh, the words town meeting shall mean the representative town meeting of the town established under the Winchester Town Charter and further regulated under chapter two of these bylaws. So then we took it, one of the other issues was some of the language, some of the laws, some of them, were they applicable or up to date? And let me just write this. So for instance, in Hackney carriage, so that they, this was edited because these laws were taken out, or recommended to take out, because they're really no longer applicable or in use. So for instance, chapter one sixty-two, section two, was used in the bylaw to describe what a Hackney carriage is, merely as a comparison. It listed several other vehicles that are listed in chapter one sixty-two, such as ambulances, trolley cars. And so at this point in time, do we actually need to keep that language? Chapter five ninety-two sixty-one, section one, the statutes of nineteen thirteen, they're no longer in use. So, as a process of elimination, we brought, we changed the definition of Hackney carriage. One thing that was done was, two new terms were added. Given the changes in the Hackney carriage industry and the rise of the rideshare industry, a new umbrella term was added, and that is commercial passenger transportation, to encompass Hackney carriage and transportation network vehicles. Transportation network, along with the applicable mass general law, was added, and that's one fifty-nine A, chapter one fifty-nine A and a half. Town officers, we had a question about clarifying that term, which specifies, if you look at officers, it specifies elected and appointed officers, officers primarily referring to residents, now includes a reference to administrative officers, as are found in both between the charter and the bylaws. And this is listed as administrative officer and appointed paid professional or administrative Town agency, the words town agency were, shall mean, were adapted and it's added to, the words town agency shall mean a division of the town government, town government specifying any board, commission, or committee, department, or office of the town government, whether elected, appointed, or otherwise constituted. We also created a definition for the town website, on which it provides access for the public to conduct online town-related business and otherwise be informed of the operations of the town. And at the same time, we were eliminating the use of bulletin boards, which are currently are no longer in use, but the town was required to post notice on bulletin boards in various locations of town buildings. So in, in addition to the definitions, there were, as I said, three sections, or the references to general laws that was brought over, the computation of time, which is also brought over, and the number and gender was brought over. And in this one, this one was adapted to include the language that we were adopting in the charter, in the bylaws, which means words importing gender shall be specified according to office title or role. And then the last would be the recon, what the, the general provisions would look like, it would be sort of a new, three sections would be added. The seal is also in that section, and the new sections would be references to general laws, computation of time, and number and gender. And that's, yeah, okay.
Thank you. Can we hear a recommendation from the select board?
Hello again. So the select board, sorry, voted unfavorable action on this one. And a, a large part is, this is one of the more important chapters of our bylaws, 'cause it does set the stage for everything else. When we had town council at our meeting about two or three weeks ago, one of the questions that was asked is, did, was the work done to make sure that whatever amendments were being made to chapter one were scrubbed through all the other bylaws to make sure that they were consistent and didn't create new problems? And the answer we got was no. And here, there, there's a couple things in particular that we're worried about, and it's a couple amendments that are just unnecessary and create new risks. So, for example, Hackney carriage, we are now striking that as a term of art through our bylaws, however, that term persists in chapter three and chapter eight, which means by making these amendments, now we have an undefined term later on in our bylaws, and that creates ambiguities and inconsistencies. On top of that, there are many, many terms here that are being added that are already in our charter, and our charter is our governing document, and it controls over our bylaws. It is also much harder to amend. By putting definitions into our bylaws that are subject to a lower bar for amendment, we're creating a situation where we can have inconsistent definitions between the two most important documents to our town. This is not a risk that is imaginary, because, I'm, I'm afraid to say, some of these proposed definitions, specifically town agency and town officer, are not consistent with those definitions as they currently exist in our town charter. There's some other language in here that we think is a little ambiguous, I'm personally a little worried about how seven days, as it's being calculated here, could impact other time calculations throughout our bylaws. And so this is another one where we were not comfortable with all the various edits that were being proposed, the, the amendments that would be necessary to fix them all tonight would be numerous, and because of that, we voted unfavorable action, but would certainly support this going to a committee for a, a, a further review to make sure that the work is not lost and that we do have consistent bylaws that, that work with our town charter as well.
Further on the question, are there any other boards or committees that want to be heard on this? Further on the question, Mr. Juris?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Do you have Juris, precinct eight? One of the definitions that I'm not sure exactly where it originated, but it's in bold, so it's been added here, is voters. And town meeting may recall that a couple of years ago, maybe three years ago, we voted to, to, I'm gonna get this wrong, but I'll try to get it right. We voted to submit a home rule petition to Massachusetts Legislature to allow non-citizens to vote in town elections. I think I got that mostly right. So my question is, in this definition of voters, would, does that reflect, if that, I, I, you know, it'd be great to know what's happening with that petition, but let's say the petition goes through and is approved by the legislature, will this definition of voters accommodate that new definition? And through you, Mr. Moderator, to whoever wants to take the hot potato.
Any volunteers? Mr. Chalamet?
That special act, which is similar to several other proposed special acts by towns throughout the Commonwealth, is, never was acted upon. So it wouldn't affect this here, so that it's not the law. The legislature didn't approve it. If they had approved it, then this still would be effective language, because it says the word voters shall mean registered voters of the town unless a different interpretation is required under the Massachusetts general laws. So if they're using their authority to pass a special act, then it would become the, the law here. Obviously, there's different contexts, but here, as is where is right now, voters in this town still only refers to registered voters.
Thank you. Mr. Moderator, can I have a, make a comment on another section?
Sure.
So I would like to follow up what select person McGonigal said about, in particular, the counting of days. And one of the things about a number of our boards are, we have, as you all know, many volunteer boards who often meet once a month, maybe twice a month. And how days are counted matters in terms of whether they're business days or calendar days, because some committees don't meet often enough, so that if you move from calendar days, or, sorry, from business days to calendar days, you may run the risk of requiring more frequent meetings, or you might miss a deadline. So I think it'd be wise- So, I think it'd be wise to table that change and take a look at how we calculate deadlines throughout all of our bylaws, or zoning bylaw in particular is the one I'm more familiar with, to make sure that we're not setting up, um, setting ourselves up for failure, or shooting ourselves in the foot, whichever one you want to choose. So, I would, um, make a motion, well, I'm not gonna make a motion, anyway.
Thank you. Further on the question? Further on the question?
Hi, Jennifer Haley, Precinct 7. Through you, Mr. Moderator, to either the proponents or whoever could answer the question. I'm curious, on local newspaper, what, is there a definition for general circulation? Does it apply to online newspapers, and more specifically, would Winchester News count in that definition?
I believe we talked about that, and yes, it would. We, we were talking about different options for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Miller?
Yeah, I just had one comment at the risk of getting the two lawyers, uh, at odds again. Um, the, the way I read it, the, on page 50 of the motion book, there's, uh, the word Hackney carriage is deleted from the title. But I think, Mr. McGonigal, I think you're incorrect to saying that the, the definition of Hackney carriage has been removed. That's not correct. And, and I, it, 'cause that, that is the first, that is the purpose of the first three sentences in the revised definition. So, um, my, my question is to, to the, this went off. But my understanding is that this is a pretty solid replacement of an old term with a broader term, so that wherever the word Hackney carriage appears in other articles, this definition sweeps in and, 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 and fixes those as well. At, my second, so that was a question to the town council. And in response to Mr. Jarius', it's, um, sorry, what did it again? The comp, time in Section 6, um, at the bottom of page 51, that, that is a savings clause that allows more time to the town if there's a time requirement of less than seven days or less. So, it, it, it's a savings clause. It, it, it helps the town. It's, it's, and I would refer that to, to town council as well. So, I see both of those clauses as positive and, and worthy of support.
Okay. Both seem more like comments than questions, so we're gonna move on to, uh, Mariano?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mariano Gollwitz, Precinct 5. Um, I agree that, uh, our, uh, Chapter 1 is a foundational part of our charter, and that there's too many issues that are in disagreement, um, here for us to, uh, try to amend on the floor. So, I move, uh, that we refer this article back to committee, to the Committee on Government Regulations, to work with the select board, um, and come back at a fall town meeting with a new, uh, Chapter 1 that addresses all the concerns.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Is there a second? Anyone wanna speak to that? Can move to the question. All those in favor of moving, uh, referring Article 37 to committee, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Article 37, I'm sorry, 38. Article 38 contains a number of proposed changes. The items have been sparked, the, the, items in it have sparked a fair bit of debate. For that reason, the chair seeks unanimous consent to divide the question. Um, it is moved in second that Article 38 be divided and proposed amendments to Chapter 2, where the bylaws be divided into separate questions, so that each section, Section 1.2, Section 1.3, Section 2.2, Section 2.3, Section 2.4, Section 3.1, Section 3.4, Section 3.5, Section 3.7, Section 3.8, Section 4.3, Section, uh, Section 4.3 may be considered and voted on individually. All those in favor? Any opposed? The motion carries. Uh, for our discussion on Article 38, on behalf of the petitioner, the Committee on Government Regulations, Megan Blackwell.
Yeah, that one. Surfing, yeah, that's better. What did I do? I wanna, oh, now it's. Okay, thank you. So, before I saved your time, now I'm gonna take some of that time back. This is a long one. So, here's my, it's so long, I have an agenda. Okay, so, first, I'm gonna go through the non-substantive items. Yeah, people are leaving already. Um, then the medium ones, and then the substantive changes. Then I'll do a deep dive into the substantive changes, and then I'll explain, on the fly, what will happen if Article 38 passes or if it doesn't pass. The non-substantive proposed changes. So, again, um, there's a suggestion to post town meeting notices on the website rather than on bulletin boards. There's a amendment to have the town clerk notify absent town meeting members by email instead of the traditional way. And then there's explanatory comments that the spring town meeting is not limited to matters that have fiscal effects on the town. That debt service on capital expenditures should not be considered before the first Monday in May, and that the fall town meeting is not limited to non-fiscal matters. So, let me explain, two of these were suggested by town council, who explained, is, that's the spring town meeting one and the fall town meeting one. Oh, I'm sorry, I misspelled meeting. Um, but, that these two items, it was already understood that with the bylaws. So, adding this language would not change things substantively. Also, it was clarified that members are nominated for our committee, the Committee on Government Regulations, by and from town meeting members during precinct meetings and considered for appointment by the moderator, standard practice, how things happen now. And the removal of two committees listed there, each of which has been inactive for numerous years. If you read the stricken language, the Committee for Equal Opportunity last met in 1985. Okay, now, these are medium changes, and I'll explain why. So, the first is that warrant articles and motions be posted on the town website at least 13 days before town meeting convenes. So, this is not seen as a big change, because it happened for this town meeting. So, it's something that the town manager's office strives to do, and they do when they can, but it's, it's not standardized, it's not a requirement. So, this would be a change, and that it would be a requirement. Uh, the second change, not seen as a big one, is ending debate on a motion. Were, okay, so, ending debate on a motion would use a motion to move the previous question in town meeting time, which is the same as moving the question in Roberts Rules. So, yes, it's a change, because it's explained that it's under town meeting time. It's not seen as a big change, 'cause it's just change in language. Okay, substantive proposed changes. So, all of these are thought to be under town meeting time. So, first is the change of parliamentary procedure from Roberts Rules of Order to town meeting time. The second is that a two-thirds vote would be required to lay a motion on the table, whereas only a majority vote is needed under Roberts Rules, which we use today. The moderating members would grant initial proponent, uh, additional speaking time. The time of speakers after the initial speaker be reduced from five minutes to three minutes unless, unless extended by town meeting members. And a motion to reconsider may be voted by town meeting members to be heard at the same session at which is, at which it is made. The other class of substantive proposed changes are not on procedural motions, but now, um, requests that warrant articles that ask for funds include estimates of cost, that's not new, duration of the funding, which is new, and proposed funding sources, which is not new. Also, a substantive proposed change is that wa, warrant article funding estimates, identified in the previous bullet, shall be shared with the finance committee to review and report at a town meeting on budget and tax. So, the finance committee does review all warrant articles that have financial implications now, like, that are asking for funds, or any other articles, so, which they choose to comment on. But this would require them to report budget and tax impacts, if any, using the same formula. Okay, now, a more, a deeper dive. So, town meeting time. This was first mentioned, I think, in the fall town meeting by town council. And we looked into it. So, town meeting time, it's published by the Massachusetts Moderators Association. It was designed specifically for town meetings and to be more easily understood by citizens. You may or may not know Roberts Rules of Order was designed to govern smaller organizations, um, and the rule, in town meetings, how they function differ significantly from the smaller organizations for which Roberts Rules was designed. And it's been stated that Roberts Rules can be much more complex. So, here's a chart that was put together by Ed Levac that compares town meeting time, Roberts Rules, and Winchester bylaws. So, there are a few differences. Privilege motions, um, are debatable under Roberts Rules of Order, RRO. They're not debatable under town meeting time. For other motions laying on the table, town meeting time does not require a second. Roberts Rules requires majority vote, whereas town meeting time requires two-thirds, and our town bylaws do require a second. Moving the vote, it's just different language, as I mentioned earlier. Um, and postponing indefinitely is an inferior motion for the previous question, but superior to a motion to lay on the table. Incidental motions, um, point of order is used in town meeting time. To reconsider, resend, majority vote under town meeting time, take from the table, no second required for Roberts Rules, and second required for town meeting time. So, our committee is not the expert on town meeting time or Roberts Rules. But we do know, sorry, I'm trying to advance, okay, that there are some pros to using. So, town meeting time was designed for town meetings. Subject matters experts who spoke to our committee endorsed it. So, this includes, uh, previous moderators came to our meeting to endorse it. Town council is a fan, and our current moderator was not against switching to it. According to Google, most Massachusetts towns use it, although some do not. And Roberts Rules are complex and are not always correct when applied to town meeting. The cons to switching to town meeting time is that it would be a change. Change is hard for some, you know, maybe reviewing the book and having sessions to really understand the differences, that would be helpful. And, um, there's been suggestions that there hasn't been sufficient time for all town meeting members to read, to understand the changes. Um, I know that I've read Roberts Rules and tried to use them, and I used them incorrectly, so that's just my own personal experience. Okay, going to financial review to warrant articles. So, this recommendation stems from the Communications Study Committee. You can't read it, but this is the, the cover sheet of their recommendations. And I quote from it that "The intent is to provide a standardized approach for reliably comparing costs and impacts of proposed expenditures." And the finance committee supported their inclusion and suggested using a standard template. So, now what I said I would do on the fly is go back and tell you what would happen if it, oh, may I have one more minute?
Does town meeting grant one more minute? All those in favor? Any opposed?
Okay, I have one anti-fan. But, um, that's okay. So, the not, so what would happen if this article passes is that these non-substantive changes would take effect. Uh, a, a lot of them happen already, so the, the bylaw would be, um, a more accurate reflection of what's done. If it does pass, some of these things will still happen, but it just, the, the chapter This is what happens also for the appointment of our committee. So, this will continue to, whether it's bylaws, um, these committees will still not meet, presumably. So, the medium changes, um, if it's not passed, then there's no guarantee that the motion article or warrant will be posted to the town meeting, uh, to the town's website at least 13 days before the meeting convenes. And, um, if it doesn't pass it, then town meeting time would not be used. So, again, none of these changes would be implemented, and the risk of not implementing the financial changes is that there will be uncertainty in, um, in warrant articles that request funding. It won't be standardized, people will use different rates, and that could lead to confusion. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's hear from boards and committees, starting with the select board. Okay, let's, let's start with, um, section 1.2, yep.
Okay. So, 1.2, favorable action.
Okay. It is moved in second, so, I, I forgot to, uh, point out at the beginning here that, um, Article 8 is an amended, or, I'm sorry, revised article that was available for everybody on the town website and at the front checking table. I'm sorry, 38. What? On 38?
Good evening, town meeting. Tim Matthews, Vice Chair of the School Committee. The School Committee did not take individual action on each of the different divisions of the question. Um, but I did wanna, so I did wanna just say upfront, we, um, as a committee, voted unanimous unfavorable action on this entire article. We were not aware that it was going to be subdivided into multiple motions, and so we did not take, uh, up a discussion of the individual motions. But we did vote four to zero, unfavorable action, on the entire article. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Um, as I was saying, so there, do you have a copy of it? So, it looks like this, just so we're all on the same page. It is moved in second that the town vote to amend certain subsections of Chapter 2, Section 1.2 of the town's general bylaws as set forth in the revised article. Uh, let's hear from boards and committees, starting with the select board. Good, okay, okay. So, we're ready for a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? The ayes have it. It is moved in second that the town vote to amend certain subsections of Chapter 2, Section 1.3 of the town's general bylaws as set forth in the revised article. Select board?
Yes, select board recommended favorable action. Town manager's office thinks that that's certainly a reasonable timeline. As long as it's published in the warrant, it's available, and that's usually 13 days before town meeting.
Anybody want to speak to it? School committee?
So though we did not subdivide our recommendation, this was one of the specific things that we discussed that we felt very much uncomfortable with, in particular because there are a number of situations where things are happening very quickly in the days right before town meeting, and the extension in the amount of time for posting did not make a whole lot of sense to us and thought it might actually complicate things and even lead to situations where the new changed provision gets violated just solely because of the fact that information is not available in time.
Thank you. Anyone further on the question?
Just, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
So, just to clarify, 1.3 speaks to the timing of the warrant. The warrant closes at least 13 days before town meeting. Motions are a later subsection, and select board certainly was favorable action on 1.3. So there is a difference between the timing of motions and articles, and this is the warrant, and this is what we were favorable on.
Point of order is well taken. Any further on the question? Okay.
Mr. Moderator, I think there's an error on what's displayed. I think the first pull is correct, but then the second one should remain 10, not 13.
Okay. So that's a scrip, and we'll make, we'll make note of that, that's right. Yeah, so this is the amended revised article that was available outside. It's been on the website for four days, right?
So there's this one, just on the screen? I'm trying to see.
Mr. Jarius?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Could you re, could you, sorry, brain's frozen. The person who spoke without a microphone, it's very difficult to hear them in the back, so could you repeat what they said? Someone just said several sentences up front.
Ms. Blackwell?
Through you, Mr. Moderator, to the question, I had said that there was an error on what was presented here, that the first underlined statement is correct and accurately reflects what's highlighted and was placed out on the table. But the second item, we left as originally written in the bylaw to be 10, not changing to 13. Thank you.
So there's a, yes. Yeah, there's an error with the slide, but the document that's been on, on the desk outside is correct. Ms. Sarah?
And I'm here to say that the document that is outside is not correct, because I just picked this up. I made sure that this is the latest one, and there are crossed out footnotes after numbers, 10. So if you look on your paper, right, you'll see in the highlighted section are actually these little footnotes that are crossed out.
Does the committee want to explain the footnote crossing?
Yes, so the original footnote refers to when it was changed to 10, because it was previously 7. So I believe the footnote should remain, because what we changed, so what's in your warrant article was changing the 10 to the 13. And then what we changed before you is we went back to the original 10 and just added that the warrant article shall be made available and posted to the town website. So, the footnote should stand, because that tells you when it was changed from 7 to 10, and we're not changing that.
Are there any other questions? But the article as printed here and on the printout that was available is correct. Is everybody in agreement on that now? No?
We can make a friendly amendment to our article to let the footnotes remain. We don't want them stricken, because they have relevance.
Okay, is there a second? All those in favor? On the, on the amendment?
Where's the footnote?
Not the like one with the strike through it, that may be a mistake, maybe isn't, where's the actual footnote? Supposed to have stuff like left in, or crossed, or bolded out. I'm just curious where the actual footnote is, so that we can sort of see what you're telling us. Hillary Yee in Precinct 1.
Ms. Blackwell?
And also, which version are we supposed to be looking at? Because we've got one version there, a different version on the table, different version in the book, just really confused about which version.
The version on the table is the one where...
Okay, and that doesn't match that.
It doesn't have a footnote, but the text is...
Am I supposed to stay through the moderator's somebody? I'm just wondering, who do I address it to?
We're waiting for an answer.
Okay, they're looking it up.
Need the Jeopardy theme song, My Apologies. Does anyone have a copy of bylaw, Chapter 2? Do we keep that at town meeting? The original, right? Mr. Moderator, to save the day. Okay, so, I'm reading from the original Chapter 2 town meeting. And so in section... Okay, so, the footnote 1 refers to Article 11 of the 1984 Fall Town Meeting, changed 7 to 10. So that's what the footnote number 1 refers to.
Is that answer your question?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Golevall?
Yeah, Mr. Moderator, I think, you know, different people have different versions of this and are confused, and it's 10:00 PM. I think maybe we should adjourn and take this up at the next session, and that way everybody has the same, the exact same version. It is very important, and I know it seems like maybe 10 days, 13 days, 7 days, it's not that big of a change, but I think that any time that we make a change to how town meeting itself is organized, it's very important that we all know exactly what we're doing. And we shouldn't do it at 10:00 PM, when different people have different versions. So I think we should adjourn. Will you take a motion?
You want to make a motion?
I move that we adjourn.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll come back on Monday.
Good evening once again, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Alan Diden, and you have been watching the second session of Winchester's Spring Town Meeting here on May 1st. So, some pretty dry stuff, that's why I've got a water bottle here. We started with Article 21, which was covering our water and sewer rates. We heard that they need to increase 9.5% for each of the next two years. Our MWRA assessment increased by 18 and 1/2%. Without this increase, we heard there'd be a $900,000 deficit. However, the footnote was that these rates and the water usage is very dependent on weather. Hot, dry summer increases a lot of weather, water usage, and a cool, wet summer decreases it. So they are a bit flexible. They said the average household with an irrigation system would go up about $72 per bill. So, the bulk of the meeting was government regulations, proposed by the Government Regulations Committee changes, a lot of them very just edits and clarifications. Quickly run through those. Article 40, talked about election officials, new election dates are now on Saturday, and talked about towing responsibilities. We heard one town meeting member said it was all too complicated, let's move to indefinitely postpone it. That failed. The article was passed. Article 41 was dealing with town managers' duties and allowing the town manager to designate someone to, for certain duties. That was passed. Article 42, the certain positions had to be reappointed every year by the town manager. This gives the town manager the option to appoint for multiple years. It clarifies the treasurer collector's position as one position, and referred to numerous other ones. That passed. 44, the water and sewer regulations remove gender-specific comments. That was passed. 45, public order, updates current procedures, cleans up some of the pronouns town meeting member, a town meeting member had concern with the term well-being, that it might limit free speech. That motion failed. The article passed. The dog leash law, there were some grammar corrections in Article 46. That was not taken up tonight. Article 47 and dog leash rules was passed. Article 48, dealing with litter. The select board opposed that there were too many edits. Motion to indefinitely postpone it failed, but the article itself was postponed. Article 50, criteria of historic buildings and demolition hearings, the select board striking the words "and/or" which were in listing some multiple criterias. The town meeting approved the removal, and the article passed, excuse me, Article 51. Article 51, that was Article 50. Article 51 dealt with smoking regulations and nicotine products. Pretty much the whole bylaw was deleted, because it was superseded by state regulations. That passed. 52 was a regulation of news racks in the town, mostly deleted. The racks that are there must have a permit, and they must have contact information posted on them. That passed. Article 53, public shade trees and committee makeup. That passed. Article 54, renumbering of the bylaw sections. That passed. Article 55, footnotes reorganized. That passed. Article 37 went back to Article 37, clarification of certain terms and general provisions of the bylaw. For instance, talking about posting notices on the town bulletin board, that's replaced by the town's website. The select board approve, opposed some of these, said that the charter is the governing body of the town, not to be overwritten by bylaws. This was referred to a committee for further study. That passed. Article 38 was the last one to be considered, and it was rules and regulations about town meetings. Changing the governing of town meeting to something called town meeting time, not Roberts Rules, as it currently is run. Committee for Equal Opportunity, Human Services Committee, those committees were disbanded because they haven't met for decades. Warrant articles with financial impacts must contain budget and tax impacts. School committee voted unfavorable action on this. There was a lot of discussion, opposition to the warrant notice increasing from 10 days to 13 days before town meeting. But in the end, there apparently was discussion, there were various versions of this article. There were revisions, and there was a notice, revisions who were posted on the tables outside. So town meeting member suggested this be adjourned to the next session, which will be next Monday, to allow the town meeting members a chance to take a look at the latest versions and make some decisions on that. And that was, that was our meeting for tonight, mostly government regulations. A lot of it is just clarifications of terminology. If you can go back to your warrant, if you want to know exactly what was done. A lot of dry stuff, but a lot of hard work by the Government Regulations Committee. A few typos in there had to be corrected, but that is it for the second session of town meeting. Next session will be next Monday with a guest analyst in my place, so desirably out of town. So we will, we will, our coverage will be back next Monday, right here at the Winchester High School. I want to thank the Wind Cam crew here tonight, and all of you for watching. I'm Alan Diden. Have a great night.